Call the meeting order, please. Call the roll.
Ms. Collins?
Here.
Ms. Reno?
Here.
Dr. McFadden? Mr. Monk?
Here.
Ms. O'Neil? Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Swarker?
Here.
The quorum has been established. Next on the agenda, the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda are citizens' comments. This is the portion of the meeting where you, the citizens of the Mount Clemens Community School District, can address the board with any of your questions, comments, or concerns. We ask that you stand, come to the microphone, state your name and address. Be mindful, you have three minutes by which to make your inquiries. Also, you may not receive a response to your particular inquiry here this evening. Last but not least, I ask that you address all questions, comments, concerns to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments.
Yes, sir.
Hello again. Is this on?
It is.
It's working? Okay. Fred Huber, graduate from Mount Clemens Public Schools.
Your last name, sir?
Huber, H-U-E-B-E-N-E-R. And a former resident of the city, live in South Warren now. But I run the, with fifty-five other volunteers, the McComb-Fosch Closet. I've been here before. I know some of the members weren't here the last time I spoke, so I thought I'd come today to kind of... And I'll be here until we find a new home. Honestly, I'll be here at most of your school board meetings talking, because we're in between now and when the eviction notice you gave us comes due. You know, we're kind of in a crisis mode, so... But we rent space for you at the George Washington Elementary School, now known as the McComb Family Resource Center by the county. And we've been there since roughly 2014. We have about 5,000 square feet. We serve 1,200 foster children a year there. And everything is free. We're all volunteer. We have no paid staff. Luckily, we have such a high-quality volunteer base, we don't need to have paid staff to accomplish a job. Every foster kid in McComb County, St. Clair County, Northern Detroit, Eastern Oakland County, Lapeer County, gets every single thing they could conceivably need from us, from Easter baskets, Christmas gift, birthday gifts, sports equipment, bikes, clothing, shoes, hygiene products, school supplies, every single thing, absolutely free of charge. Foster children are the most abused and neglected children in our community. They need the most support. Otherwise, it's just a pipeline straight to juvenile justice and later on, drug abuse, alcohol abuse, and the jail system. So we're trying to do everything we can to course correct. It's already a tough battle, so we've tried to support the families as much as possible. I'm a retired police officer, and I can tell you the hardest job I've ever had is being a foster parent, not being a police officer on the streets of Detroit. This is the toughest job, so we've got to support the families. Anyway, we have to have a home. Currently, we have an amazing home in your building. We'd like to stay there. We'd love for it to be a permanent Family Resource Center. But I know that takes the school district and the county together. And right now, I know there's political issues all over the place and desires to go in all kinds of different directions. But I just want to speak to the issue that when there was a long-term lease on the building, we had quite a few nonprofits in that building, so not just us, but quite a few other ones that were very happy to be there and serve the citizens of Mount Clemens and the broader McComb County community and beyond. And ever since that long-term lease expired, one by one, those nonprofits have left because they can't operate on a year-to-year basis. There's just not enough stability in that. It's us and Community Housing Network are the last of the nonprofits in that building, as well as all the county's social services that are there. If you go back to those good days when there was the long-term lease, it was an amazing social services building for both county services and for all those amazing nonprofits that were also operating out there besides ourselves, including two different homeless agencies that service homeless populations. So it's within walking distance of every resident and taxpayer of Mount Clemens. It's a great location. And I just want to speak to that. And I'll continue to speak to that up until such time as we find another home or we resolve the problem of staying where we're at, one or the other. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Agenda still open for citizens' comments. Agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Last call, citizens' comments. Seeing or hearing none, moving the agenda forward. Next on the agenda, action items under the consent agenda tonight. Item five, the consent agenda 5A. Approval of the minutes 5A1, the November 16th, 2022 regular meeting. A2, the December 1st, 2022 special meeting. Three, December 15th, 2022 committee of the whole workshop. Five B, approval of bills for payment. Five C, new hires. One, consultant of finance and operations. Two, assistant superintendent of finance and operation. Three, third-grade teacher at Seminole Academy. Chair would entertain a motion relative to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by... Remember Jacob? Remember Reno? Sorry about that.
Both are true. Support.
Second by member Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor regarding the consent agenda? Mr. Monk?
I just have one. Madam Superintendent, was that paragraph changed in the Assistant Superintendent Finance Director's contract that we talked about at the workshop?
Yes.
Was that paragraph changed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns regarding the motion on the floor on the consent agenda? Hearing or seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Swarker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. The motion carries. Madam Superintendent, would you like to introduce?
I would.
Ms. Davis?
Ms. Dawes, I would like to introduce Jennifer Dawes. She... Mr. Lavender is here to speak to her, and she came, and she drove here just to meet all of you this evening.
Hello.
Hi.
If I can add some experience highlights for Jennifer. Jennifer Dawes has 23 years of experience working in business offices in public schools in Michigan, 21 years as a business manager in public schools. She holds a bachelor's degree in accounting. She is pursuing Chief Financial Officer Certification through Michigan School Business Officials, Business Managers Certification through Michigan School Business Officials as well. Completed the School Business Manager Academy through the Michigan School Business Officials. She is currently participating in the Horizon Leadership Program through MASA, and she has a wealth of experiences in the areas of budget development, grant accounting and grant management, payroll, contract negotiations, state and federal reporting, and human resources. So we are looking forward to Jennifer joining our team.
Welcome to the club.
Her first day is January 9th.
Agenda item six, student discipline. Madam Superintendent.
The parent has requested previous to a closed session, but I don't see the parent here.
Who is it? High school student?
It's, I'm sorry, it's a middle school student in sixth grade.
Is Ms. McNeely here?
Ms. McNeely is not here, but Mr. Hannah is here. He... Okay. Mr. Hannah is here to speak to this.
You stated that the parent requested a closed session?
Correct.
But they're not here?
Yep.
To, in fact, put it into closed session?
Right.
That's true.
Right.
So we'll have to... Have to have an open session, because they're not here to request it.
If you'll just give us a moment so we can get Mr. Hannah in here, please.
Was the parent aware of what time the meeting was?
Yes, the parent was aware.
Let me ask, is it something that's of importance that there's some background that we need to have information on?
I'm sorry, what did you...
We don't have any information on this.
Or we can move, we can... Or we can move the agenda item, hoping that they show up.
Move it to the, yeah, move it to later.
We can move it back.
We can do that.
Chair would entertain a motion to remove item six to later on in the agenda. Make it a new item. Make that item 10.
Item 10, item 10, item 10.
For the sake of ease, make it item 11, you know, instead of backing everything down.
Or you can make, you can make it item 10C. Just add C on to there.
No, it wouldn't fit under 10C. Because that's not for business.
Got you, okay.
Chair would entertain a motion to move item six to after item 10 for business.
So moved.
Moved by member Walker.
Support.
Second, member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on moving item six to after item 10?
After item 10?
Yes, sir, after item 10.
Okay.
Hold on.
Is this, is this her?
I don't know.
No, no, don't look her.
No.
Any other question?
No.
We're gonna, Tom, we're gonna wait a few minutes just in case mom shows up? Oh, okay.
She's not coming?
Do you want to...
Yeah, let's go ahead and do it now.
Let's do it now. Tom, could you come and speak to this, please? Remember, we're using the student ID number.
Does the motion need to be voted again?
Yeah, we're second. We had, we moved a second to move item six to after item 10. Call the roll, please. Load it down.
Ms. Swarker?
No.
Mr. Ham?
No.
Ms. Collins?
No.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Dr. McFadden?
No.
No. Motion carries. Item six remains item six. Madam Superintendent.
I'd like to have Mr. Hannah please come up and speak to the student discipline.
Hello, I'm Thomas Hannah, Dean of Students here at Mount Clemens Secondary Complex. We're addressing Mr... His number?
Student number?
Student number 7352.
Student number 7352. Student was found in the hallway with a bag of marijuana, also a bullet. His first explanation as to why he had this, that a student gave it to him. Went to, we kind of shut everything down, went to a student that he named. We searched that student, searched his locker, searched both students' locker, shut the classrooms down. We found that that student had no idea what we were talking about and that the student had basically made the story up to incriminate someone else versus himself. We then called the police. They searched also our area. They came in and talked to mom. We then suspended the student, notified the superintendent, or Mr. Lavender, and basically that was it. The student is suspended, pending administrative investigation, and basically what we've come up with tonight. The student has been suspended several times prior for, I don't want to say minor, but various situations, fighting theft, small theft. But he's been an issue ever since the school year started. He is a sixth grader. He transferred in from, I can't remember what school.
So it says, I'll show here, just quickly reading through this, this is the first time we're seeing it, that the student was enrolled on October 17th.
Yes.
That's less than two months.
Less than two months, yeah. He's had several instances.
And I see three discipline referrals, attacked the student. After returning for suspension, major disruption, insubordination in the classroom, disrupted wrestling other students, and purposely knocked over furniture. What does, when you, when you contacted the mother, what did the mother have to say?
I mean, mom's fully in support of us, but, you know, he's just, he's a really troubled kid. He's, you know, she says she wants to attempt to get him medicated, which she isn't on medication, so, you know, you can't use that. But he, he's just a really troubled kid. He hasn't, he hadn't any support from what mom said, from father at all. He's just, he's just constantly having issues where, the previous school, he had several issues she told me about. We don't have them documented, but she was, you know, that was her main thing. He's been in trouble at every school that he's been to. He has little respect for her as well. She kind of told me that she wasn't gonna come tonight and that she was going to try to enroll him somewhere else before, you know, the inevitable happens, so...
Says he's not disabled. Did we test him? Has he been, was he tested?
He hasn't been tested by us. He only been tested out to...
That's one of my questions.
Yeah. Yeah. No, he doesn't have an IP. But she questioned about that. She wanted a 504, but, you know, obviously, we would try to accommodate as much as possible. He's, he's been kicked out so many times, yeah.
Did, did we know his behavior before he was enrolled from his previous school?
No, I didn't.
So his CA-60 didn't follow?
No, it didn't follow him right away, no. It may be here now, I'm not sure.
Okay. Have we had any of our professionals, psychologists, social worker, kind of sit down with him, talk to him, attempt to talk to him?
Yes, we have. We've all attempted. Ms. Terry, Mrs. Monk. Yes, we, we, she even, mom even scheduled him an appointment to go next door to Henry Ford, which he hadn't been yet, so...
Okay. So you said you found him with a bullet, but no other?
No bullet, no gun, a bag, a bag of marijuana. But my thing is, if there's a bullet, a gun is somewhere near. Right, so he had a bullet, and the police were very concerned. I mean, their recommendation was, you know, to make sure we do what we need to do. But they're, they offered him, they're gonna give him more than likely probation. They did ticket him. But more than likely, they referred him to Officer Simmons. I'm sure some of you guys know she is. So he's gonna be on probation with her, which she deals with a lot of our students. But, yeah. Other than him getting a ticket, as far as the law goes, that's pretty much it. Hip that and probably probation.
I see that the principal is recommending... How come the principal's not here today? What kind of principal's not here today?
Today was a vacation day.
I see that she's recommending that the student be expelled. What type of timeframe are we looking at? Is this to the end of the year? Is it 180 days? What are we looking at?
As Tina and I talked, we were looking at 180 days because he's, he's really been going downhill in the entire time he's been here. No improvements academically nor with his behavior. I spent hours talking to the student, myself, Ms. Terry, our counselor, Ms. Monk as well. We've all talked to him and spent time, you know... Like I said, we set up an appointment with him next door to the psychology, and he, he doesn't want to go, so...
He's a sixth grader?
He's a sixth grader. He doesn't look like a sixth grader, but he's a sixth grader. And it concerned me very...
I don't understand why he don't want to go. The parent need to drag his butt over there.
That's my point. It concerned me because he, I mean, I'm always concerned, but this one's a little bit deeper because he blamed several students. You know, these kids were innocent, totally innocent, had no idea, you know. And their parents were very upset because I called them right away after, you know, we did the investigation. So they were very upset, and, you know, they had some demands that I really couldn't. They wanted to know who the student was and all these different things, which I couldn't let them know. But they're concerned about him making statements, you know, about kids who are totally innocent, our decent students, so... He was just trying to throw it off on someone else because he's having several issues, like on a daily basis here, you know.
So I take it because of all his discipline, his grades are probably less...
They're tanking, yes, yeah. He was, he was going up for a bit, about a week after that last suspension, and then he went right back down.
Okay.
He's an out-of-district student?
No. He's in, he's in district.
But he's school choice? Did he come from another school?
Other school, but he lives here.
He lives here.
He lives here, didn't he?
Yeah.
I just have a concern with the recommendation. And I don't know if the policy describes a bullet as a weapon. I understand, you know, where they're fired, there's fire, there's smoke, where there's a bullet, there's a gun. But in this situation, that we found no gun anywhere on the property, on the student, in the building. So I'm just, do we have the latitude to interpret a bullet for 180 days?
That's gonna be tough. That policy specifically states, and it names firearm, knife. It names, it names, you know, so it...
I don't have that.
Yeah, it may be... But, yeah, I mean, it's...
I see it now, Mr. Monk. Or it's ammunition.
Ammunition.
Along with the drugs, that's a combination.
And then with the drugs. And the combination of both, yes. That's kind of no brand.
Yeah, you got violation of two policies. Policy 5530.
Yep.
And policy 5772.
Yep.
Any other thing else you'd like to add, Mr. Hannah?
Nah. She pretty much informed me that she wasn't gonna be here because, again, like I said earlier, she's gonna be, she's trying to enroll him somewhere else, so... Nah, that's pretty much it from our end.
Any other questions, comments from the board? I don't think she can. If we, if we put him out for 180 days unless she goes to a private school or a local school. He's not allowed in any public school.
Right.
Including charters.
Yeah, but what happens is sometimes parents, when they feel like their son is, or their child has done something just high level, they leave here and go right away somewhere else. So, you know what I mean? And a lot of schools are letting kids in without full CA-60s and transcripts. It's unfortunate, but it's the reality, it's happening.
I think the state policy specifically states that even if a kid enrolled in another school and they're found to be expelled for 180 days, they are immediately to release that.
Exactly.
Take that kid off their, their roll.
Yeah.
You already know my stance on it. I'm doing it for safety.
Yep, same here.
I'm not gonna pass the buck onto another school district. No.
No.
Yeah. So you said you're not going to pass?
I'm not gonna pass the buck to another school district.
Well, I, I understand that. But I don't want our student to be endangered either. So, that's my concern, my first concern. Our student's here. Unfortunately, also, when students enroll somewhere else before they get, you know, their information from us, it's just a reality, some schools do not follow through.
True that, you're right about that.
Some schools don't follow through.
Then that's on them.
Yeah, it is. I'm just letting you guys know. I've experienced that too.
If somebody requests his records, which they should...
Which we do, we do.
No, I mean, they request the records from us,
Yeah.
like about this student, that's gonna be on his record and they enrolled him already, or, you know...
Right.
They're supposed to de-enroll him.
Right, we, we also inform the state.
Yeah, we do, yes.
Yeah, once that, once it hits the state, then the state, as far as allocation of FTE, that school will not get that allocation, nothing whatsoever, so...
Any other questions, comments, concerns to Mr. Hannah regarding student 7352? Thank you, Mr. Hannah. The recommendation is to expel student 7352 from the Mount Clemens Public School System for 180 days.
So moved.
Moved by member McFadden.
Support.
Second, member Monk. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? It's, it's sad, it's one of the hardest things as a board member I have to do is to expel kids. Because our job is to educate kids, but if they're not here for that purpose, we have to protect the safety of all other students and staff in the, in the building. So it's a hard decision, but it's a decision that we have to make. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item seven, Curriculum and Personnel Committee, A, Personnel, A one, Leave of Absence Extension Step Placement, Madam Superintendent.
I'd like to pass this over to Mr. Lavender to talk about our letter of understanding, memorandum of understanding regarding hiring of teachers.
At the December fifteenth Board of Education Workshop, it was presented information regarding the letter of agreement extension regarding step placements. This amendment is an extension of the current letter of agreement that had expired on September thirtieth. This amendment would allow us to place new hires on a salary schedule step aligned to their years of service. This extension allows us to draw in new hires with experience. And we would like to get this letter of agreement approved so that through the rest of this year, if we have to hire any new teachers, we can meet them at their years of experience on our salary schedule. I'd like to thank the M C E A leadership for working with us to draft this amendment.
Heard the recommendation is to approve the L O A between the Mount Clemens Education Association and the Mount Clemens Board of Education. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by member Reno to approve the extension.
Support.
Second, member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item eight, Policy Committee, eight, eight, Resolution to Update Policies That Name Compliance Officers, Madam Superintendent.
This, um, this amendment here is, or this resolution will update the compliance officers in the district to, in terms of Title nine, to Mr. Lavender and Ms. Kelly Metter. I can read the whole piece if you'd like me to, but.
There's, there's a Cliff Notes version.
Okay, the Cliff Notes version is, our policy is to maintain an education and work environment that is free from all forms of unlawful harassment, including sexual harassment, and the commitment applies to all school district operations, programs, and activities. This, these are people that, if there is an issue that's happening within a classroom or that's happening within a school, if they're uncomfortable of all things, these are people that they can go to for help, for understanding, and for follow-up when needed. So we are changing and requesting that it be Mr. David Lavender and Ms. Kelly Metter. There is also training involved in this, and both of those will be going through additional training. I think Mr. Lavender already has had some, and we will make sure that Ms. Metter has it as well.
Any questions to the superintendent regarding the updated policy for the compliance officers? Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. MacFadden to approve the Resolution to Update Policies That Name Compliance Officers.
Support.
Second, Mr. Reno, I hear you, sir, heard you first. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item nine, Resolution to Support, in support of Stormwater Management Plan, Madam Superintendent.
So the information that Mr. Melching and I have on the Stormwater Management Plan is that when we adopt this resolution, what it does is it allows us to participate in stormwater management within the county. If we don't adopt this, we won't be able to. There's no cost or, there's no cost associated with, and there's actually no obligation according to this. But the fact that we have adopted this means that if needed, we can be part of this. Pretty simple.
Yeah, I just got one question regarding, and it might be where it has to be worded. It says within Detroit urban. And I'm just saying, is that how that resolution?
Yes.
Is written, you know, because we're not within Detroit. We're a separate city of Detroit, so I was just asking, is that how that resolution is going out? Because I know we're not the only district that's, that's, that's voting on, on this.
Correct, yeah. So it's pretty much tri-county, it is a regional.
So the reason we go in with this is because of consortium, something like that?
Yes.
All the other schools have been doing it?
Mm-hmm.
So pretty much we're in the same pot?
Yes.
The recommendation is to support the Stormwater Management Plan. Chair would entertain a motion relative to, item nine, Resolution in Support of Stormwater Management Plan.
So moved.
Moved by member Walker.
Support.
Second, member Reno. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor as to support the resolution in support of the Stormwater Management Plan?
You did say it'd be no cost, right?
Correct, at this time, you know, if something happens, there may be down the road, but it would be shared within that consortium.
And what if we don't accept it or vote for it?
Then we won't be able to have the consortium to help us out in case something goes wrong. We'd be on our own.
We've been on before, anyway.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal? Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, the motion carries. Item ten, Board Members, ten, A, Establish Time and Date for the twenty-twenty-three organizational meeting. By state law, we have to hold the organizational meeting no later than the second Monday of January. January comes, the month comes in on Sunday. The second Monday is the ninth, so we have to hold the meeting prior to the ninth. I would like to put out for consideration, the board, that the organizational meeting be held Wednesday, January the fourth. Put that out as consideration.
Six thirty?
Wednesday, January fourth, six thirty, in this room. Tell you what, I'll put it in form of a motion. I move that the established time and date for the twenty-twenty-three organizational meeting be Wednesday, January fourth, at six thirty P M.
Support.
Moved by member Rickman, second by member MacFadden to establish Wednesday, January fourth, six thirty P M as the time and date for the twenty-twenty-three organizational meeting. Questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Agenda item ten B, Establish the Course of Action Regarding the Superintendent Succession. As we all know, Mrs. Beal's contract expires June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-three. She has let us know that she will be retiring at that time. The board has, when I look at it, three options. We can do a superintendent search on our own. We can see if we can partner with the I S D, or we can put it out, establish a bid, put out in the universe for superintendent search firms or executive search firms to guide the board through the process of selection of the superintendent beginning in July first, twenty-twenty-three.
If we choose to look for a superintendent on our own and are not successful, can we change that to outsource to an agency to assist us?
Yeah, we can, but the thing about that is you waste time. You know, at what time, what point would you say we're not getting, the board's not getting it done? You know, you're wasting time. The board does, decides to do it itself and then doesn't complete the task, that's time that you wasted. And I've been on the board long enough and we've done, I've been on boards that have done that by itself, and I would not recommend that.
What's the opinions again?
Do it on our own, see if we can partner with the I S D, or we put it out for bids for an executive search firm, superintendent search firms.
I would look for our partnership with the I S D, we still got pretty good graces there.
The only thing with the I S D, they have provided with us retired superintendents, people that, you know, coming back in after saying I threw in the towel and they decided they still had some more energy to give. And so that, that was the situation with the I S D.
Have we used a search firms before?
Yes.
When they were successful?
Let's see, I'm trying to remember. The last time we used a search firm is when we went out.
Monk Catcher?
Monk Catcher, yeah.
That's my thought.
That was the last time we used a search firm.
What was the name of it?
No, no, the last time the superintendent that we used, through the process of the search firm was when we hired Chuck Monk Catcher.
Oh, Monk Catcher, yeah, okay.
What process we use after that, because we did something else?
After that, we did it our own, and then we did the I S D. My recommendation would be that we establish an R F P, put it out for search firms.
What is the standard cost on using a search firm?
Uh, they vary, each firm will probably each, whoever, if we get any firm to bid, they, they all, it's not a rounded number, I would say, in the neighborhood of between three thousand and seven thousand dollars, is my recall.
What's the procedure? Do they find them and we interview them, or how does that work?
It, it's, if you hire a search firm, it's a big process, you know, they come in and meet with you to get some parameters, they establish community meetings to get input from the community. They put all that input together and they put it, you know, in front of the board, and the board, you know, decides on what direction they're going to do. Then they, they put it out in their universe of where they got superintendents and people of that executive level process, put it in a process. An interview process is established, the interviews. You have to interview for the company in public, and then once you decide on which search firm you want to go with, then that process began. Ultimately, they provide a list of candidates that the board would review, and ultimately interview those candidates. And then one or two interviews, depending on what the board's will is, and it's generally, it's not, after the first interview, you don't just hire that person, you come in for an additional, additional interview, round of interviews, and you're selected, so. And I, I would say, for the benefit of the board, we'll have two new board members in January that haven't been through anything regarding school boards or superintendents. I think I'm the only one on the sitting here, were you on the board when we went through the process with Monk Catcher?
Just got on the board.
So, Janine, were you on the board when we went through the process, the superintendent search firm, when we got Monk Catcher?
No.
And so, two out of seven are the only ones that has, has an experience in that. Again, I, I think it would be disastrous if, if we did it ourselves. It just would be a big disaster.
So you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Move that we draft R F P to look for a, how you want to word this, a search firm?
Superintendent search firm.
Superintendent search firm.
Moved by member MacFadden to move in the direction of establishing the R F P for superintendent search firms.
Support.
Second, member Collins. Any questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
Do we need a timeline or anything, say, to let the administration?
Well, usually you put an R F P, it's generally two weeks or so that you put it in the universe. It could be longer, shorter, depending on.
There's really only two firms in Michigan.
M A S B and.
M L I, Michigan Leadership.
Well, you know, out of state firms can do it also.
Yes, they can, they can.
Okay.
But it is a process. It does entail special, special meetings, many meetings. It is a process.
So that's something that needs to start right away, then?
Uh, that's why I'm introducing it today, yes, ma'am. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Hearing has seen none, call a roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Soneal?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Informational item, item eleven, Business and Finance Committee, are there any questions regarding the financial reports? Are there any questions regarding the contract listings? Seeing or hearing none. Item twelve, Superintendent's Comments, Madam Superintendent.
Good evening, I'm going to start my comments out with the Martin Luther King celebration that, our march that we'll be having here, leading from our high school down Church Street to Main Street to that Episcopal church, whose name is escaping me right now, I apologize. But it's, it's a short walk, we did this last year, and we're doing this again. And this year, there's a lot more involvement with our students at Seminole. The kids, all of the classes and most of the students have created a project, done some sort of a project in honoring Dr. King. And all of that is going to Ms. Carol Sullivan, and there will be some judging. And Ms. Bethel showed me, I was there the other day, and she showed me through, and the kids put a lot of work into it, and I was really proud of our students and all they had done. I'd like to thank Mr. Monk and Mr. Reno for your service to our district and our kids. You are much appreciated and you will both be missed. I'd like to welcome Jennifer Daws to our team. I, I was telling her earlier, I can't wait for January ninth, we're all excited to have her with us. I'm also excited about Ebony Armstrong, who will be starting January fourth over at Seminole in third grade. I wish everyone a safe, restful Christmas holiday, New Year season. I hope your days are full of love and relaxation, and those are my comments.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Item thirteen, Committee Reports, A, Business and Finance Committee, any information coming from the Business and Finance Committee? Item B, Mr. Leonardberg, no, no report. Item C, Curriculum Personnel, any additional information from the Curriculum Personnel Committee? Item D, no report. Any, item E, Policy, anything coming down the pipe, track, line?
Nothing, nothing, just look forward, you guys look forward to February update.
Yeah, that's when the big packet comes, right?
That's right, and he said it's going to be a big one.
Okay.
There is no legislative report. Which brings us to agenda item fourteen, Board Comments. Mrs. Collins?
First, I want to thank Jake, it's been an experience we've shared over the last year and a half, year and a half.
Yeah, yep.
Mr. Monk, it's been an experience with you two, spending time on the Policy Committee. You've taught me a lot with Policy and the short time on the Finance Committee. I'm going to miss you guys, I'm going to miss random phone calls, conversations, it's been fun. I'm sure we'll still have them. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, enjoy your families, so, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Soneal?
Merry Christmas, everybody. I do want to thank Jake and our quick, short texts, it seems like, all the time. And Mr. Monk, I truly thank you. I thank you for the questions you ask that spark the difficult conversations. I am truly going to miss that, I truly appreciate that. And again, it's, I can't believe that this year is like over already. And so we're looking to forward to another great year. And again, Merry Christmas and rest and have some me time, take care of yourselves. Mental illness is real out there, so take care of yourselves, and that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Soneal. Ms. Walker?
I too want to thank Jason and Jake for the time I've spent with both of you on the board, it's been a true pleasure, and you will be missed. And same thing to our families out there and our kids, have a very Merry Christmas, and enjoy your time off with your family, and just enjoy each other, those are my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Reno?
Usually I keep my comments pretty brief, tonight's a different story. If you don't mind me reading from this, the opportunity to serve on this board for the past year and a half has been a great privilege. While my tenure on the board has been brief, especially in comparison to some of my colleagues at the table.
Watch out. Watch out.
The honor of having served the students, families, staff, and community of Mount Clementon Schools is one which I will carry with me indefinitely. The decision to not run for election to a full term in my own right was not an easy one to make, but I've been able to find resolution that even though my tenure on this board is coming to an end, my advocacy on behalf of Mount Clementon students, families, and staff will continue in every other aspect of my professional, academic, and personal life as an ardent supporter of public education. To my colleagues around this table, although we may have disagreed on several issues and many times have had differing viewpoints and approaches to the unique circumstances that our district has faced, I thank you for the chance to have served alongside you, and I commend you for your continued commitment to stewardship of the district and the shared goal of providing every student with high-quality educational opportunities. To Superintendent Beals, thank you for your service here in Mount Clementon, culminating a lifelong career of commitment in the education profession. It's been a privilege. Your experience and insight have been greatly valued. To Assistant Superintendent Lavender.
Dave, you can't get rid of me. I'm like a bad penny. I keep showing up in your life, man.
To our Mount Clementon teachers and staff, you are the driving force and the most valuable asset to the district. Your commitment, your passion, and your impact are resounding. I see you, and I thank you profoundly. I will continue striving to be a champion on your behalf. I would be remiss if, in my last commentary on this side of the table, I didn't repeat a few truths that I hold dear, ones that I know I've said here many, many times, so I'm going to repeat myself. Every student, regardless of any demographic qualifiers, deserves a high-quality public education, and it is the obligation of this board to ensure the receipt of such. It is the obligation of this board to support and respect the highly-trained professionals, our district's teachers and educators, in partnership with the association that represents them. Our students are more than test scores on a comparison metric, and our educators are more than expenditures from the district's budget. They are the greatest asset our district possesses, and it is the best practices of teaching and learning that will define our district in a bottom-to-top bubble-up approach, not a trickle-down of rhetoric, policies, spreadsheets, and graphs that come from this table. And, public schools must maintain an ongoing commitment to advancing social justice and equity and ensuring safety and well-being with our community. Please don't forget these. To the incoming board members-elect, Mr. Walker and Ms. Cohoon, I wish you the best of luck as you assume your new roles on January 1st. The responsibility lies with you now. And to all of the Bathers community, it's been a great honor serving you, and I thank you. I wish everyone a joyous holiday season and a very Happy New Year. I hope everyone is able to spend some time together with family and friends, relaxing, recharging, and making merry for the holidays. And those are my comments. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Reno. Mr. Monk?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will try not to make this long. How much time we got?
I'm about to close, y'all.
No, first of all, I want to thank all of our community partners, both profit and nonprofit. I have seen the outpour of support from this community towards our kids and our families during the holiday seasons like nowhere that I've ever seen anywhere. Detroit, Ypsilanti, Ann Arbor, Jackson, these are all the places that I've lived. This school district does an outstanding job at providing support for our students and families, and it's because of our community and our partners, both professional and nonprofit. So, I just want to say thank you to that. This is my last board meeting. I'm excited. I am just so excited right now. I get a chance to, my, both of me and my wife's passports finally came, so we're getting ready to live our best life, and our first trip is already scheduled for Amsterdam. So, we are out of here. So, with that being said, I've been involved in working to empower youth for the past forty years. I started with this district as a volunteer parent back in 1995. That was when Edison Project started. Over the years of volunteering, teaching, coaching, working, and supporting this district through my company, Jagoff LLC, I then was voted in as a board member eight years ago. I've watched the past boards over the years and saw that I could bring some of my knowledge and talents to the school board. I have enjoyed being a trustee, board president, board secretary, and, most importantly, policy chair. Policy gives you the guardrails for governing the district as a board member. I trained myself to be the most knowledgeable trustee that I can be. I completed all of my, all of the 100 class courses in the first ten months of my first year as a trustee. I continue to take, huh?
Taking away my thuns.
I continue, I continue to take M A S B classes on a regular basis to keep up on the changing laws and regulations that comes with public education. I can say, I can say for over the past two terms that I have read every policy from zero, zero, zero to nine thousand, and consider myself very diverse on school policy. Eight years is a long time to be on the board, but I have definitely enjoyed them. Times change and communities change. When a community feels like things are not going the way it should, they will vote their conscience for change, and the community has spoken. We have two new board members. Congratulations to both of y'all. Congratulations to you both. I wish you success in all your endeavors. Get trained. I cannot say that, get trained. Do the classes. They will help you. Get trained, and know the policy. The community, parents, and, most importantly, the students deserve your best. To my fellow board members, it has been a pleasure working alongside of all of y'all. Absolute pleasure. We didn't always see eye to eye. Sometimes I felt like I was an eye to eye myself, but I do believe that we all tried to put the students and parents first in every decision that we voted on. To the community, thanks for allowing me to bring my talents to this position. We have improved the district's financial situation, but there are still challenges in the future. I wish everyone in the district and the community a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mr. Board President, these are my last comments, and Mr. Monk has just left the building.
Thank you very much, Mr. Monk.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say happy Hanukkah or happy Festival of Lights for those who celebrate those holidays, and Merry Christmas. Jake, I really value your insight. Many times we talk behind those doors over there, negotiations, contracts, and everything else, and your wisdom was of great value to this board, and I really do appreciate you. And also, you're actually a pretty funny guy, too, by the way. So, I remember a couple nights. So, anyway, thanks a lot. I really do. You're going to be missed, but we do thank you for everything you have done. Mr. Monk?
Yes, I'm done.
Partner in crime?
Yes.
I don't know who the delegate going to be with me when the next time we go up to the school board meeting or the M A S B, but we'll figure it out. You too, I want to thank everything you've done. I mean, set on a lot of boards, committees together, and we like Starsky and Hushman. We used to tag team people all the time. People only knew the things we did behind those closed doors. But, the battle will go on, and I want to appreciate your wisdom, your guidance, and your insights, and you will be missed also. I want to say thank you. For the community, first thing I want to say is, and everybody around this board knows my stance on safety and how I do not bend on that, but I'll make sure, and you know for a fact, safety is a priority. So, whenever I find out there might be an issue or situation, I'm going to stand firm on that. I want to thank the community for putting their grace in me and putting this board again. I'm going to stand firm and do the things I need to do. I think a lot of us have done a lot of training on this board. I will continue my training. Don't put me on that policy committee, though. Please. I've been policy chair two times already. Mr. Monk, you can keep it, have it, you can go to bed with it. But nonetheless, I want to thank everybody and hope the community be safe. Happy New Years, happy holidays. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
I know, I'm not a policy committee, I know.
I'd like to open by saying thank you to the union leadership for your partnership, understanding the situation and challenges that we're having here in the district, and agreeing to extending of the LOA from September, from, was it September?
September 30th until June 30th.
Till next year. So, we really appreciate that partnership and that team effort through the union leadership. To the staff and students, enjoy your time away. It seems like we just started the school year, and here we are halfway through the year, getting ready to go into 2023. So, enjoy the break. Enjoy your time off. Use it to rest, recharge, reinvigorate yourself, have some fun. Try to stay warm, because getting ready to get socked. Mr. Reno, it's been a short period of time, a year and a half, that you've been on the board, but I thank you for stepping up and putting yourself in the situation to be in, on the hot seat. I appreciate your thoughtfulness, your, your thoughtfulness and your inquiries of our discussions and our debate, your advocacy, and your perspectives. They will be missed, and they, thank you for those.
Thank you.
I'd like to first thank Ms. Shirley Monk.
That's right. Oh, yeah.
You stole all the other stuff that I was going to say about you, so I'm going to put something there that you should have said.
That's right. She gave me eight rolls for eight years. Thank you, baby.
I'd like to thank Ms. Shirley Monk for allowing Mr. Monk to serve on the board.
Yes.
You never know what you don't know until you know. And I say that because you never know. Perspectives change when you're on one side of the, when you're on the outside of the table. Once when you get on the inner circle, the whole perspective's changed. Mr. Monk had, as he alluded to, several positions in the, in the school district prior to deciding that he wanted to step up and join the board. During his tenure on the board, you've held several positions, including the president. You were, how can I put, you were driven to get that first level of training. And, you know, that was, when you first got on the board, I remember the board was saying, "Train and get to training," and you took it to heart, and you got the first level of boardsmanship within the first year. And that, that's an attribute to your dedication and determination in getting to know what you needed to know that you didn't know, just getting elected to, to the seat. And I, I know you know how valuable that training was. I thank you for your services on the various committees, the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, the Athletic Committee. But I really want to thank you for your stellar work as the Chair of the Policy Committee. I know you didn't like me. You wanted to beat me up when I, when I appointed you to, to that position. And when I reappointed you to that position, you didn't want to do it. And I think last year, I had to basically, "Come on, man, twist your arm if I could, but your arm was too big for me to twist," you know. We needed, and through your dedication and the knowledge that you gathered from that position, you spoke at the state conference with the policy company as a panelist to talk about policy. And so, you did stellar work as a Chair of that committee, and you will be missed. I thank you for keeping me on track when sometimes the train was getting ready to be derailed. I look over at you and you're getting that certain look, and I said, "Okay, yeah, I need to get back on the track." I thank you for asking the tough questions. I realize that the passion that you brought to the table with your questions many times may have been interpreted as being angry, but I realize that it was the passion that, that you exuded and that coaching spirit that you, that you, that you bring to it, and I realize it was not anger. We have, we have argued different perspectives at this board table based on our experiences and our exposures, but at the end of the day, we never took it personal, and we both moved forward in the best interest of the students and the Mount Clementon Community School District. So, I applaud you for your energy, your effort, the dedication that you've brought to this board in the last eight years. I realize that this will be the last time that you will be sitting at the board table, but I also realize that Jason Monk is not disappearing and turning ghost on the Mount Clementon Community School District because of the things that you did prior to you being a board member, the things that you did while you were a board member, and I, again, I don't envision you going ghost on the Mount Clementon Community School District now that you're no longer on the board. I applaud you. I appreciate, I respect what you brought to this table, and you will be missed. You'll be greatly missed on this board table. But, as you said, there's one thing about elected, elected position. You can do ninety-nine things that people approve of. Do one thing that they don't approve of, and you lose your seat. And that's, that's, that's the realism of the democratic process.
Yep.
And so, and again, sorry, you'll be missed, and we'll, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Those are my comments. Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Moved by member Monk?
Support.
Second, member Reno. Hey, you know, these guys are happy to get out of here. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Reno?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned at 7:39 PM. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.